The order. Alrighty, we're gonna do roll call. Okay, Mr. Eluses Cardenas?
Here.
And Alex Peroni?
Here.
And I guess Josie Felix is absent. Alrighty, Mary Salazar present. Okay. Oh, please.
Permission to pledge allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, so. Approval of the agenda. Any public comments? Okay, we're gonna do the approval.
So move.
Anyone second?
Second.
Okay. So Alex, all is in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Alright, thank you. Alrighty, so, public comments. Non-undenized items, note not to exceed three minutes. This is a time for the public to address the planning commission on any items not appearing on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. The chairperson will recognize you and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. Well, members of the public are encouraged to participate. It is unlawful to disturb or delay the planning commission meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. If the item you wish to comment on is closed, is a closed session or consent item, please comment now. The planning commission is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussion items that included on the printed agenda. If the item you wish to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, it will take your comment when you get to the item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the planning commission. Any public comments? So no, I guess we move on? Okay. So, alrighty, so the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be recognized, to be considered routine by the planning commission and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately from the committee. One, approval of the regular planning commission minutes for January 22nd, 2018. That is... So we... So we... Motion that two pass?
Approval.
Approval? You first.
Second.
You're in a second? Okay. Alright, all approved? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so I guess it's passed. Approved? Okay, second item. General plan amendment and zone change UA 2018-01. The proposed general plan amendment would re-designate project area number one and number three from the low residential, LDR, one to five units per acre, and similarly re-designate project area number two from commercial to highway-related uses to high-density residential. HDR 12.1-20 units per acre usage for both. The proposed zone change would rezone project area number one and number two from R1 residential single-family and CH4 commercial highway respectively to RA residential apartments. Presentation by Ralph Morales, building code enforcement, planning and mark associate.
Chairperson, commissioners. This is an item that was brought before the planning commission in the past and so we're bringing it back for reconsideration for the zone change. The purpose of the application to be considered is to eliminate any legal non-conformant status, especially on three project areas that exist. Three project areas that exist. Basically, these areas that staff is looking at are applications or applicants or property owners that have come before the city and requested a zone change in order for them to be able to build and construct multi-units. The first area consists of 78 properties or approximately 10 acres. The number two project area consists of five properties, which is about approximately five acres, and then the number three area consists of 10 properties, which is about 1.5 acres. The last several years, approval was given through a method of CUP, which was reviewed and approved by the planning commission, which allowed the residents to construct additional units on their properties. Now, it is important that the staff correct the city's general plan and zoning map and to eliminate the legal non-conformant status and allow the construction of units outright for additional units. A survey was done by staff and the method that those locations were identified was that when the survey was done, then at that time, what happened, then those certain lots had either a structure in the back or there were properties that had multi-units on it. And so by looking at those areas, then staff then made the recommendation that those areas did or should qualify for a zone change in order to be able to make it legal so that these property owners can come forward and apply for multi-units. A negative declaration for the project was completed by city staff. This report was sent out to the responsible agencies for a 20-day public review period. And then there was also a public workshop that was held January 30th and to inform the public of the general plan amendment and the zone change application. At this time, it is staff recommendation that the planning commission open the public hearing and allow input from all parties on the proposed project. And so, so that it will be, the proposal would be consistent with the general plan and housing element. It is also staff recommendation that the proposed general plan amendment and zone change be recommended for approval by taking the following action, and that would be to approve resolution number 2018 recommending the city council adoption of negative declaration, which is number 2018-01, and then resolution number 2018 recommending to the city council approval of the general plan amendment number 2018-01, and resolution number 2018 recommending to the city council approval of the zone change, which would be number 2018-01. So we're requesting that a public hearing be opened.
Okay, so we have a public hearing right now? Anybody wants to speak?
Excuse me?
Okay, can you state your name and your address if you could be?
Yeah, yeah, you would. I think you can go to that one.
If you can come to the mic so we can... Uh-huh, yes.
Jose Samuel Wu. The main reason that we don't want it is because we're already packed in as it is and like you said, there's a lot of places or residential areas that already have, you know, illegal one dwellings or two dwellings, but in most cases, it's about two or three. And the city, the section you guys are wanting to turn into more apartments and stuff, I mean, drive by down them, I mean, they're parked with cars, you know, you can really get in and out, not to mention the sewers, I mean, are you guys gonna upgrade the sewers for industrial? Because most of these people, they just jimmy rig the sewers to add on another two, three restrooms, you know, you get rotor ruder here all the time, you know, just clogging it up. In our area, I mean, we still have a cast iron, you know, plumbing still going out, we replace most of it, so I don't even know what's on the vein, you know, drag, but the main column is congestion and are you guys gonna upgrade the facilities for the residential areas you guys are gonna, wanting to turn into commercial, I guess?
Ralph, that's a question for you.
Well, any improvements that are done on the property would be done by the property owner if they were to come forward and wanting to do any construction on the property, that would be some of the things, and some of the issues that this gentleman brought forward would be taken care of, for example, the vehicles being parked on the street. Then before any project is approved, then they would have to show that the amount of units that they put in would have enough areas to park the necessary vehicles off street. If, as well as the provision for water and sewer, that would be the same thing, they would have to provide sufficient sewer capacity lines as well as water to be able to service the project. So it's not a, the approval of the zone change does not give everybody a green light to say, "I wanna come in and build 10 units." The consideration is taken in as to the size of the lot, what fits within the lot, and can they provide all the necessity requirements that needs to go along with the units that are going to be constructed. So there may be some individuals or property owners that come in and they wanna go ahead and build a set amount of units, but in reality, then they would be limited to build just, you know, less units if the lot is not big enough and the provisions cannot be given too. So these are the things that would be taken into consideration. What that does too in doing the zone change, then it also cuts down on the illegal construction because what happens now is that making it legal, then you have the people coming forward and building and following the regulations that should be followed.
What about the existing ones? Will you basically make them upgrade to current? Because you already have, like about, like I said, two or three dwellings, you know, in the back already, you know? Will those people be forced to upgrade to the current standards or would it just be for new applications?
Well, they would, yeah, they would be given the opportunity to be able to legalize what they have and meet the requirements. If they're illegal, then code enforcement would go out there and inform them that they have to legalize it. And in doing so, again, we go with the same thing, they would have to show that they have sufficient parking, that the capacity of sewer and water is big enough to be able to service what they have there, and so these things would have to be brought up to standard as well as the building code as far as the energy code that the houses need to have. And so those things would be looked into, so...
Looked into retroactively or just given the opportunity to upgrade as the owner sees fit or would it be mandatory?
Well, if it's illegal, then, you know, it's not retroactive. What happens is now they have to meet the most current building code. And so that would be what you almost could call the punishment for building something illegal.
I don't wanna diss my neighbors because it's mostly residential, but mostly what they have right now on these illegal, if you wanna call them dwellings, they got propane tanks from Mexicali, which are not exactly up to code, shall we say? Luckily, don't have blown up, I guess, but they're older residences and most of them do it to supplement their social security, so you don't wanna be putting the finger on people that are just, you know, trying to avoid eating cat food, you know what I mean? You feel for them, but, you know, they do the best they can, but they're not up to code and you kinda just like turn a blind eye. But the parking's atrocious, you can verify parking there, I'm not even gonna mention crime, you know, but...
Well, again, the good thing about the zone change that it will help to alleviate some of it. To say that we're going to take care of all of it, well, then I wouldn't be actually be telling you the truth, but if there's co-violations and you have co-violations and then you have some serious co-violation, the propane that you're talking about, that is a serious co-violation because...
Most of these people, they're not trying to, you know, they're doing the best they can with what they have, you know? They're not trying to become the next Rockefellers, they're just trying to supplement their income, you know, it's, you know, so you're not gonna let it go. You know what I mean? Most of them are your neighbors and stuff, but I guess our whole point is, my mom, for example, she's been there for 50 years, raised three of us, you know, three brats for the most part, but it was a good living, I mean, it was a good way to grow up. I mean, Callexico's turning more like into, I don't know, too congested for the, you might say, the way the matrix of the city was originally set up. I mean, you might as well just, you know, tear down the whole rear of the bench line and just start putting high raises, you know? It'll change the city profoundly. And from my personal experience, I think Callexico is the most beautiful city in the valley. I mean, we have the best public works, I mean, you can tell there's love in the city. This just seems like it would make it overly congested and kinda take away the uniqueness of, you know, what in my opinion made this a great town to grow up in, so. Anyways, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Permission to speak?
Yes.
Well, I actually, I'm not against it at all, I think it's, I think it's great, I think it brings, you know, the city definitely needs, is there anybody that has apartments or knows about it? You can't have an apartment out for rent more than a day, there's always somebody trying to rent it, it's good business, and I know that the Rockefellers are, you know, they're the Rockefellers, but sometimes you need Rockefeller's so that people can have places to live. My hat's off to the people that are trying to bring investments to the city like this. I do echo though some of your thoughts about as far as parking, and I would hope that the city would work on that with these developers and make sure that they have adequate parking onsite instead of offsite, so those, those areas are very congested on the street, street parking. And it could be because of the illegal, you know, the legal garages and conversions that have, that have happened, and I know that time and time, you know, the city's always trying to combat that, but again, it's extremely hard with one code enforcer in the whole city and the staff really limited on what they can do. But again, I just wanna, one, I only have one negative comment, and that is that I don't think it's fair that we're only doing this, it's a general plan, GPA, right, for just this certain area. Why not cut out a bigger area so that those people that are in that area won't have to go through a CUP process in the future? Why not cut out a certain area so that, you know, everybody in that area, I mean, it shouldn't be that hard to send notices to them and see if they wanna be included in this GPA or not, or something of that, that's the only thing that I'm thinking, why not make that area larger? If we're already allowing this, I know that there's one particular place where I, you know, these people come to the city, they wanna build apartments, and then it's like, "Well, you're not in the plan." And it's like, "Hold on, well, my neighbor next door has four units, what's going on? Like, oh, my cat." "Well, they were done in the past." Well, you know what I mean? That has to stop. I think it needs to be fair for everybody. And so making the area larger might alleviate a lot of those problems. I know if I take my, as a city councilman, if I put my hat on, then obviously every CUP has money for the city, but at the same time, you know, why not help out the residents around that area and grow that area more? That's, that's my only comment, I think, I think it's common sense, to be honest with you. So hopefully you guys will echo my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Esther Wu and I live at A19 Heffernan Avenue, and I have seen how my neighborhood have changed because of disregard of the code zone. My next-door neighbor has about three apartments, he been converted the Porsche, you know, that she had in the back, and so I can see people coming and going, and I don't, there's no zone that the city, I have reported it, you know, several times, you know, whenever I see what's going on, and the city doesn't seem to do anything at all. You know, and the sewer constantly, they breaking out, I constantly see the excavators going in there repairing because it doesn't, it's not a capacity.
Okay.
You know, because they don't care, they're used rental, contrary to when we own the property, we try to take care of it, we try to look, that it looks the best, that it's comfortable, you know, for us. We elderly people around the neighborhood, and that's why you don't have people coming to protest because they cannot be moved or can't be escorted, you know? And, but I know how they feel, you know, they use, we wanna keep our neighborhood quiet. We had a bad experience because we have other properties in Giles, and we allowed to build apartments, and it was a mess because people don't live in there. They usually build their apartments, but they live in San Diego or they live in other parts of the city, which is better, but there's no apartments. So I saw how the neighborhood went down, and you can go anytime because there's no rules, they deal aid for as much as they want to or they can afford. So I don't want that to happen to my neighborhood. I've been there for 50 years and I would like to keep it that way, you know? So that's why I wanted to let you know that it's, they don't upgrade the sewer and then the parking is like, it's a big problem. Even with my next-door neighbor, that is a rental, they park in the alley, they park because we have an alley like that and an alley like that. So they park in the alley, if you try to get out of there, they're stopped in the way. And then also the city used to upgrade, sometimes put a little bit of sand, so it would be so muddy. Now they don't do that anymore. So when it's raining once in a while, it's a mess, you know, because they're using it for the, the drive-through.
Okay.
So, and this, I think that's what I wanna know, to be sure, you know, that you realize that you're not upgrading, you know, the sewers or the parking space for them. Sometimes apartments provide for their place, but sometimes they leave it up to, they want the renters to park wherever they can. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Or somebody else?
Thank you.
Bueno, yo voy a hablar español, verdad, porque en inglés, o no me sale, o me sale muy mal. Bueno, okay, me voy a presentar, soy Alfredo Hernandez, soy residente de la ciudad de Callexico por los últimos 20 años. Mi dirección es 2230 A. G. M., Callexico, California. Me dedico al comercio y tengo ya bastante tiempo por acá. De acuerdo? Okay, yo más que nada pues este, pues quiero que todos nos felicitemos y que entendamos que estamos presentando un proyecto, sobre todo que este, el staff, la city, el staff está haciendo esfuerzos por regularizar situaciones de ancestro que nos vienen afectando a tiempos recientes, verdad? Le voy a hablar de dos cosas, primero porque estoy a favor del zone changing, y segundo pues voy a tratar de contestar al mandis, lo una, un cuestionamiento que ya lo tuvimos la vez pasada y que a lo mejor no se abordó o no se entendía adecuadamente, ¿por qué no a todos? O ¿por qué viene una persona y dijo, "Yo, ¿por qué no lo puedo hacer en mi garage?" Okay? Entonces este, pues primero que nada pues felicitar al city staff y sobre todo que tenemos alguien que nos escucha aquí, que es la city commission, y que queremos presentar este proyecto y ver el punto de vista de un residente de Callexico que le interesa que su ciudad mejore, que las zonas mejoren, que mejore el building. Okay? Yo estoy a favor del zone changing por bastantes cosas, verdad? Primero, primero que nada, este, al cambiar la zona, estoy analizando qué, pues qué estamos tratando de cambiar. Tratamos de cambiar algo que ya está cambiado. Tenemos una zona que es legal, non-conformen use, okay? ¿Qué es eso? Para mucha gente pues que somos hispanoparlantes, pues cómo que es legal, nos da miedo, porque es legal pero no conformen use y en qué situaciones estamos, verdad? Entonces, ¿por qué no? Que hay el valor ahora de enfrentarlo y de decir que en años anteriores, hace 10, 15, 20 años, cuando estaba Ricardo Inojosa en building and planning, tenían este, recato, tenían miedo para hacer cambios de zona y nunca se hacían, podemos revisar los archivos si no hay los suficientes como hay en otras partes, verdad? Y siempre recurriamos a este, a conditional use permit, una situación que es una trampa para las gentes y que tienen que estarlos cambiando y que tienen que estarlo renovando y que se mete a la gente y hace proyectos y después les dicen, "Pues sí, pero pues ya se acabó ahora, tienes que tumbar todo lo que hiciste." Okay? Entonces, qué bueno que ahora se está ya hablando de un cambio de zona y olvidarnos del conditional use permit, eso es como yo lo veo pues. ¿Y qué significa esto? Pues significa mejorar la área, significa mejorar la zona, significa embellecer a Callexico, significa crear fuentes de empleo y ingreso, verdad? Entonces, yo no sé a quién le perjudica, verdad? Y a mucha gente le beneficia y sobre todo le beneficia a Callexico, verdad? Okay, algunos que van a decir, pues sí, les beneficia a lo mejor a los que estamos aquí hablando, verdad? Porque no les beneficia a todos, okay? Se me ocurre pensar pues que con la nueva legislación y el nuevo proyecto que sacó California con el ADU, que todos podemos, este, subdividir nuestra casa y podemos hacer una casa atrás y tenemos automáticamente el permiso de antemano, o podemos, este, poner una cocina en el garage, automáticamente pues quiero resolver la, el cuestionamiento o la inquietud que hace un momento se manifestó aquí, ¿por qué no a todos? Realmente todos la tenemos, okay? El ADU bien, vino uno a resolver el problema de la otra junta, una persona ahí que se sentió que estaba abandonado por Dios y dijo, "Yo, ¿por qué no? Si yo vivo cerquitas." ¿Verdad? Afortunadamente, el señor Alex Peroni le contestó muy adecuadamente, le dijo, "Señor, usted puede hacer eso, no necesita venir aquí." Entonces, todos los habitantes de Callexico, todos los habitantes de California, en Entonces todos los habitantes de Caléxico, todos los habitantes de California, en todas lasiris, no necesitamos venir al Siri Manager, no necesitamos venir al, al este, al, al planning, verdad? Todos lo podemos hacer. Entonces esa es la contestación que yo le digo aquí al Mandis cuando él pregunta, ¿por qué? ¿Por, por, por qué no se separa todos o por qué no se hace una zona más grande? Pues está hecho en todas las casas y en todas las propiedades del Estado de California. Gracias a la ley ADU y todos los que pues a lo mejor estamos mayores y queremos hacer una propiedad ahí, ahí está. Esto es contestada esa pregunta. Ahora la otra cosa, ¿por qué no mejoran la zona? ¿Por qué estamos dejando que los hombres se vayan a vivir a esas propiedades que están abandonadas? Okay, que obviamente a mucha gente no les interesa porque es incostable, no da la ecuación. No se va a meter dinero a una propiedad que, que no va a ser fructífera. O que a una propiedad que nos va a consumir. Y una propiedad que está atrapada en la legislación, porque todas estas propiedades están atrapadas en una legislación y tienen su cara. En la primera parte de la portada dice, "Legal, dan conforme use". No te metas porque son puros triquiñuelas y no te van a aprobar nada en la Siri. ¿Por qué dejamos todas estas propiedades que se están haciendo más viejas? ¿Por qué dejamos estas propiedades que se están cayendo? Están cayéndose. Porque una actitud de la gente que somos de Caléxico, que vivimos en Caléxico y, okay, as long as no perjudicar a nadie. Okay, si vas a tener tus estacionamientos, si vas a tener tus mirrors, si vas a cumplir con toda la legislación, si por, si por cada otra unidad que vas a hacer vas a pagar casi quince, veinte mil dólares por cada puerta. Aquí te están perjudicando, pues claro que bueno que se viene y se pregunta aquí, pero a veces dice uno, ¿por qué no se hace a todas las gentes? Pues toda la gente ya lo tiene. El ADU ya en muchas ciudades de California se está haciendo desde el año pasado. Aquí ya se está haciendo en el centro, en Jive, en Broly, aquí. Todos lo tenemos. Quieres ser inversionista, quieres más unidades, okay. ¿Por qué necesitamos ser un abogado para pelearnos con la Siri y decirle, okay, pues sabes que tengo veinte departamentos enfrente, veinte atrás y acá y tengo una propiedad atrapada? ¿Verdad? Y no me la prueban. Yo siento, yo estuve en la junta de la, fue, bueno, fue en octubre de la junta del año pasado. Estuve, estuve aquí y sí este, me impresionó una señora pues que sí venía ahí a este, muy protagonista, verdad, este, mayor y con su tanque de oxígeno pues pidiendo cosas que, que, que realmente no se analizaron. Y otra persona que dijo, ¿por qué no? Ay, ¿y yo qué? Y, y yo soy hijo de Cuico, a mí por qué no me, me este, me incluyen, okay? Ahorita se me ocurrió pues todos están incluidos y todos tienen el ADU. Y la gente que quiere invertir, quiere mejorar esas propiedades, que venga y pague su permiso aquí en la Siri. Pues no va a tener que gastar ocho mil o diez mil dólares, verdad? Pero, pero, pero es una situación que a nadie perjudica. Esos son los dos puntos, el por qué si estoy de acuerdo y por qué este, eh, no se hace a mayor proporción. No se hace a mayor proporción porque no vienen y meten los proyectos y pagan para que se analicen aunque hay una comisión de desarrollo que está siempre dispuesta, verdad? Y porque pues a lo mejor no lo necesitan, pero sí vienen a platicar a veces, verdad? Okay, es todo, gracias.
Gracias, muchas gracias. Anyone more that would like to speak? Mister Necochea, Aden Necochea.
Speak into us?
Yes, please.
Hello. Hello?
Yes.
Hi, um, I just wanna make several comments, but the first one is like for the neighbors that have had property in Caléxico for a long time. Um, I just real, feel it's really important, I know the city probably doesn't have it in the books, but when you have an old existing single-family neighborhood, a lot of these neighborhoods are deteriorating, like the gentleman had said before. I think it's really important that you have a design implement, a design standard. So if you have a big pretty house that you put a lot of time and effort into it, whoever is building apartments is not putting a little, you know, has to have some architecture design, some flavor for the neighborhood. So I don't know what your requirements are on design, but I'm just gonna say, in your case, in your neighborhood, Mister Bylon, the contractor, has done excellent work. He's built several complexes around my mother's house and he actually uplifted the neighborhood with his design and his construction. He's made the neighborhood a pretty place with his design work and construction. He's upgraded the property values and everything considerably around Caléxico. So I applaud his type of projects and I think his project should be the standard when you wish he building permits instead of these ugly, I've seen some really ugly apartments being put up. And, uh, that's just my comment on that. And my second comment is, when I look at this, it's kind of like, you know, it's hard to read and why is this person included and that included? And what if I have a vacant lot and I didn't go to the meeting? And is there a possibility of an expansion in the future? I mean, it's not set in stone in this. Okay, so there is a possibility of expansion. And my third and last comment would be, uh, I would really, I don't know if the planning commissioners, have you guys had a training session yet?
No.
I'd really recommend because I just think for the community and Ralph, you guys had a grant, it's called the Sustainable Communities Planning Grant in 2015 for the general plan update. And it has a lot of good recommendations like on mixed uses and changing zoning and a lot of good tools. And it's really important that this planning commission be respected and get training seminars because they're the key for the future. And if we don't respect the planning commission, there's gonna be no future in Caléxico for any building growth and they need to be educated. So I really encourage, uh...
Let the staff review on this?
Thank you, thank you, Bob.
I'm gonna make a long story short, but like on Cold Road, we have a lot of vacant property. It should be changed to mixed use. Downtown should all be mixed use. And we gotta encourage developers and capitals to come in, so let's be innovative and think outside the box. But I fully support, uh, the project area and I know Mister Bylon will upgrade the neighborhood considerably. And I would recommend for the neighbors to meet Mister Bylon and see the projects he's done or City Hall can show you the projects he's done.
It's not a matter of the duty, it's the quantity. I mean, it's either fully residential or just...
Well, I'm, I'm not the planning, I'm just adding, I'm just adding comments. Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Just one last comment, chair, Madam Chair. Um, and, and to touch a little bit on, on some of the comments that people have said. Um, the idea, it's really, it's really hard, um, for, I think for everybody, Caléxico, like, like yourselves. It's almost like growing pains, you know, it, it's things that happen that, that we don't like and... Well, that, and, and again, that's...
Excuse me, we can't have comments from the public unless you're up here commenting. I know, let's, let's not have discussion that way.
Just, like I said, I, I, I'm just gonna echo my comment as far as possibly looking at, um, again, making it a wider area. Um, and, and I understand the ADU units that the state has, uh, passed and, and that, I think that's something you guys are gonna see today also on the agenda, so, um, but, um, I guess my question is, is this, is this time sensitive? Could this possibly be where, uh, staff could come back, um, to, uh, to, to this committee, oh, commissions or possibly, um, they can approve it the way it is now and then it can be brought to the council with amendments as far as a larger area? Is that possible? Or how would this, um, I guess my question to you, Mister Mottis, how do you see this, um, going forward in case, um, the board here does feel on expanding that area?
Uh, I would directly question to our city attorney.
The planning commission could approve everything as is tonight and then it could move forward. Um, and then at another time, we could come back with other proposed areas to the planning commission, um, to maybe expand it if things are going well in these proposed areas that we have, the three uh, project areas tonight, then we can look at expanding or perhaps having other public workshops and getting that process started earlier.
And if I, if I may add and, and this is what I want you guys to see, um, for, uh, everybody on the board. And it's very unfortunate, right? For example, our downtown, it should be ready for mixed use now. You guys need to be proactive as board members, not just what they bring to you. What's happening now is, is the same thing. They're bringing you this because there's people interested in doing, um, uh, apartments in this area. Why, why wasn't, you know, this board needs to be proactive and say, you know what? You guys are the future. You guys can shape Caléxico however you feel is, is the right way. And not just, uh, bring things to you guys when, listen, there's something here. Why not make that whole area, uh, ready for, uh, for apartments? Why not take downtown and already make it mixed use? So when someone comes to the city and says, hey, I wanna build apartments, these guys can tell these people, hey, guess what? Downtown is already mixed use. We already have, uh, everything in place. It's ready to go. It seems like here we're reactive. We just wait till somebody, somebody's gonna come one day and wanna do mixed use downtown and then we're just gonna let them do it in this building. Instead of saying, let's get all downtown ready for mixed use. Let's get this Cold Road, like Mister Necochea said, why don't we get that ready for dense residential? Um, you guys, and I'm just saying, you guys have power up there to do these things. Don't just wait for the email, oh, I got a meeting tonight, okay, I'm gonna go and say yes or no on this. Why not, why not be one step ahead and create a subcommittee between you, you five where you guys can start coming up with innovative things of what to do to help the city in the future? That's, that way it's ready to go. When somebody comes to do business to the city of Caléxico, hey, I wanna buy a property for apartments, okay. Uh, they know where to steer you in that direction, you know what I mean? Am I making some sense?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Echoing Mister Riel, just from knowing the planning commissioners and knowing them, they never get called by the city council. Yours, it's always erratic when you're gonna have a planning commission meeting. They haven't had some, sometimes for several months, you know, in the past. So there's no leadership from the council on that. You as a councilman need to tell the staff, this is what you want, because they can't dictate to the staff what they want. So it needs to come from the top and I would suggest a joint city council planning commission workshop meeting. So everyone can learn and be on the same page and staff too and, you know, that's just my suggestion. It comes from the top, not from the, from these guys. They're disappointed by you guys and they've been ignored for the last several years. I can tell you that for a fact. Right, Ulysses?
Thank you, Bob. Okay, so anyone, anyone else that would like to?
Sorry, sorry. Um, and, and, and maybe, maybe this is something that, that I have no knowledge about, but my understanding is two commissioners can put an agenda item on the agenda, correct? Just like the council? Attorney?
Yes, yes, they can.
So maybe you guys didn't know this, but, I, and I'm not to, I, I'm not saying I'm not doing my job, but I, it's not my job to babysit. I, I talk to Alex at least once a day. So, but two, two of you guys have sent an email to Ralph together and it has to be on the agenda, correct? City attorney?
Yes.
It was that simple. They don't need me, but, but I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Riel. Yes, sir? Would you like to step up?
Hola, buenas noches, verdad? Primero que todo quisiera hablar en español, verdad? Mi nombre es Gabriel Bailón.
Y su dirección.
Perdón.
Y su dirección.
Oh, 541 Blair Avenue, Caléxico, verdad?
Gracias.
Yo, yo soy contratista aquí local, verdad? Entonces, yo he trabajado muchos años aquí, más de veinticinco, treinta años y me ha tocado ver el desarrollo que ha tenido la comunidad y he estado envuelto en, en muchos de los proyectos. Y, uh, el común denominador de las, de las opiniones de las personas donde hemos construido o donde me han dado la oportunidad, personas en invertir con ellos o construir, me han dado la confianza de, de construir a ellos, ha sido positivo y ha sido mejorado el, el área. Entonces yo, yo estoy a favor de, de, de que se apruebe el change sonen. Eh, he estado escuchando también los comentarios, verdad, de las personas que, que les, uh, que están en contra o, o porque se sienten afectados. Pero yo, mi opinión es de que mucho de los problemas por lo que están pasando con la aprobación de esta zona se van a solucionar. Porque hemos visto que hay muchos, y todos sabemos, verdad, que hay muchas construcciones ilegales y porque son ilegales precisamente pasa todo lo que está, con, con mucha razón están comentando eso, verdad? Porque, eh, porque lo hacen ilegalmente. Pero bajo el amparo, verdad, y la supervisión y la aprobación sobre todo de los proyectos donde la ciudad, el, el building department y el plano, ellos se van a encargar, verdad, de que cuenten con todos los, uh, condiciones requeridas positivas, ya sea como estacionamiento, área verde, el, el, hasta dónde pueden construir. Y, y, y por eso es mi comentario de que, uh, sería positivo la aprobación de esa zona porque se iba a solucionar mucho de los problemas. Los, los problemas que han estado pasando, que comentan con el drenaje y todo eso se debe básicamente a la ba, mal, mal estado de las, del drenaje que está en las propias propiedades. Pero los servicios que da la ciudad, por ejemplo los de la calle, eh, tienen la suf, la suficiente capacidad, verdad, para, para que no pase eso pues. O sea, si los problemas que tiene es, es un problema local de, de la propiedad, no es porque la ciudad no está en condiciones para esos servicios. Y gracias por, permíteme hablar, gracias.
Okay, muchas gracias. Anyone else? Okay.
My name is, uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Tomas Contreras and, uh, I'm just, uh, here supporting the people or myself to request the permit to build an apartment. And, uh, I've been requesting or attempting to request a permit for quite a few years and, uh, I always, I always get no answer. I like, I, like I, I come and ask, hey, can I do this? I say, no, right now, it's not, no, no permits available and Mister Ralph and, uh, he's been trying to help me as much as he can, whatever is with his hands and he's just, he's, he's out of his hands, so he's like, we, let me work on the permits and let me request, uh, higher ups. And he suggested, uh, that the, a granny house could be built, but then, you know, that's not what I really wanted. And basically I just wanna improve the, uh, the looks of the city 'cause the property that I'm talking about is on, uh, on Thirteenth, uh, Seventh Street, 1013 Seventh Street. And it has a, a pretty good sized lot, so it's got a, the backyard is a big backyard and my brothers and, you know, friends, they, hey, can I put this on your backyard? And, you know, it's like, or they said, okay, if you leave it there for, you know, tires and stuff like that, engines. And I go, okay, you can leave it there for a while, but remove it and put it, so I have a big yak, junkyard in my backyard. And I don't think that looks good in the cities, so I just see if you can have any consideration and if I can, I just wanna make the city look better. And I think that'll bring opportunity for people to work and, and, uh, I don't know if I can request a permit to build it on my own, hiring people or if you can help me with that?
I guess, Ralph? Ralph, that's for Ralph. That would be for Ralph.
Can you repeat your question again, please?
Yes, like, uh, like if I, if I get the permit to do it on, not on my own, but hiring people that they're, know how to do the work.
You can, you can do owner builder if you build four units or less. Anything over that would be considered commercial and you would have to hire a, a California licensed contractor.
Okay, well, I appreciate your assistance and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak? So, okay, so we close the comments? So any, so I guess would be us to, uh, any comments for the board?
I understand what the family over here that lives on Heffernan, it's gonna experience. I've lived in this area most of my life, the same area you live in. And, uh, I understand the problems that you'll be facing with the alley, that it's dirt and, uh, I've always had... Exactly. And you know, I, I really feel for you because I know what it is. And, uh, that's something, Ralph, that the city, uh, we need to look into it because, uh, the alleys are owned by the city. They're not owned by her or any other property owner. So we should be paving them in some way, uh, or making it not just, because by, uh, letting the, the people build, you know, we're already, uh, creating a little problem in that alley. So I, uh, I would recommend that we can look into it. So, I, uh, I would recommend that we can look into it. And again, the, the city owns the alleys, so they're responsible for the upgrades. That's something we need to look at. And, uh, I understand, again, on the density it's gonna cause in your area, because you're gonna have more people parking. But, you know, the city does require, you know, for every room that's built, certain amount of parking spaces. No, no, yeah, because, but what they're, yeah, but what they're proposing today is gonna change all that. Yeah, in the past, it's a pasado.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, now, now this is, and you know what I like? I think, uh, Robert, you mentioned standards. We need standards, and making, you know why? Because we continue to live in this area, and we would like to see the integrity of the architecture back in the 30s, the 40s, the 50s, and 60s. And, you know, it's nice to see that. I see Ricardo Calatayud in the back. He went to school with me. I, I know his parents' house. Uh, something that we need to look at, you know, the standards. And, and I know that you guys do, because when the project over here on Pauline and 6th, uh, you requested a lot of standards there, and I hope we make it for everyone, so what we're building is nice. The CUP, I heard Mr., uh, Hernandez mention. CUP are good, uh, depending on the project. You know, that's why they were created. We need to have them. And, uh, uh, it, it's an option either to build something better, and it's up to your city council or your commission to approve it or not to approve it. But, you know, it's a good option. It's a good option. You mentioned why the oldest areas are targeted to build. Because at Victorias, or at Meadows, or Las Lisas, they're not gonna permit it. They're not gonna, you'll have the, uh, yeah, so, you know, this would be filled with people. But, you know, old Calixco, ya los fuimos. Quedan pocos. So, that's one of our problems, that, uh, not enough people come. But, uh, I, I do wanna tell you, this is something that I support, but done with standards, the way they're applying it today. Because now our growth, from the day the city council approves this, it'll be a, a better construction, and I'm hoping with the standards, and that you do apply the standards, Ralph. So, whatever they're building, we don't want blocks. We want something nice with integrity of the, uh, of the architecture that they used at one time. Uh, if you notice, look at Robert's house. He keeps it up. Nice. You know, the integrity of this area. We try to keep neutral colors, so everything blends in. So, taking in consideration all that. Also, you know, uh, I, I, in our last meeting, when this was brought forward, Ralph, and you, I said, "Why wasn't," I, I went and see the red lines all over, not checkerboarded. And I see the same thing. I see the same thing. Uh, because, again, what, what is this neighbor gonna say, like Mandy said? "Yeah, how come my neighbor built the four apartments, or the two apartments, or the one apartment, and I couldn't?" I, I think we should've, uh, taken advantage, you just did the blanket here. But, you know, you did it. You did it. I don't wanna stop this. Uh, I, I'd like to see it approved, but I'd like to see it, that, uh, in a future time, we include these people. You know why? It's gonna take away density from them, the guy in the back, because the other people are, will be able to also build. And, uh, some, something else that, that I told you to do, and it's what Mandy also brought up, I told you, include the downtown, the mixed use. We've been pushing that for years. Just imagine if they were to hear in the newspaper, "Downtown Calixco approved for mixed use." All the vacant buildings would be packed right now. You'd have half a San Diego developers saying, "We're gonna bring life to the city." Then he talked about, uh, bringing a campus. Just imagine, a campus community with a mixed-use downtown? That's what we're thinking. That's why we asked, you know, make this bigger, include the downtown. We need to. And I think for our next meeting, we should have is including the downtown. Uh, start, because we let it die, and, uh, you know, we, we all wanna put our grain of salt. But, we're not really putting our grain of salt, Ralph. We need to start helping the downtown. It's dead, and we're responsible for it. Because we, we can, we can bring the change.
If I may, the staff had come to the planning commission in the past. I don't know whether you were on it or not. And, uh, our intention at that time was to change the zoning on the downtown from commercial to mixed use, because we had, uh, gotten some interest, uh, some individuals wanting to, to possibly, uh, do some work. Unfortunately, you know, and, and that's why I'm saying that you probably weren't here, the planning commission at that time turned it down.
Yeah, that would, like, if you go to the minutes when we didn't approve this, because I had a, an issue, why only certain areas? I said, "Let's include..."
But we're looking at all the downtown.
Yeah, I said, "Let's include downtown. Let's include. We need to." Just imagine, we'll sprawl development, we'll sprawl, uh, economic development. So, uh, let's, let's do that. And, uh, Mr. Contreras, that's been trying to build his apartment for many years. Uh, and, you know, Mandy, I direct this to you, because you're in the city council. Like Robert says, we, we don't have power. All we are is the commission. And, uh, I, we need to listen to people when they come. If he went in there and he kept on, "You've been coming for years," he, Mr. Contreras asked him, and, you know, nothing, and nothing. Let's not that, let that happen. You know, he's a community member. He lives in Calixco. He chose to live here and invest here. Let's help him with his development. And, uh, me personally, I've ran into issues, because we're, we're not only muted. Uh, I come to the city, and I ask for permits, and I get the runaround and stuff like that. It's not, I don't think anybody has the special wand that they get things done, have to solve us. But we need to improve that, Mandy. And we need to be a more development-friendly, uh, uh, city. And, and you know, Mandy, and you know, so... You picked me, so, uh... Uh, but, uh, I, I'm, I'm in support. And, uh, you know, it's good that Mr. Hernandez, and Bailón, I've, I've seen his construction for many years. He's done it for our family. I have no doubt that he's gonna do a, a good job. Like, there's many others that could do a good job, but Bailón's here today, so he does a good job. And, uh, I, I commend your staff, even though I'm harping on you a little. But, uh, I'm glad that you brought this, uh, because it's something we need to do.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Ulysses.
Yes, real quick, I, I, now, now that I've heard of both, uh, can, uh, both sides, that they're concerned, I think it's a very positive project, with especially if there's a possibility of bringing it back and expanding it a little bit more. So, I think it's a very good project, and I wanna commend you for your, your good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Okay, I just wanna say a few, uh, comments. I know when we had this previous, uh, brought it to us on the, on the rezoning of this, or, uh, of this particular item, I remember that my question was, the reason you had kind of had the, the odd cuttings of that, the understanding, if I can recall, Ralph, was because there's apartments there already. So, all you were doing was including the portions that are already there, because there are already apartments there. Am I correct? Is that correct?
But not in all.
Not all of them.
Not all. There's some proposed projects.
Okay, so the, the, the odd cuttings was because that, that was already, was there?
Uh, yes, and, and basically what it had is...
Most, most portion, like, Alex is saying that, not all of them, but it's most, most...
It had either apartments, or it had a second unit on it.
Yeah, a second unit.
So, because of that, then that's why we...
So, all you did was just kinda, instead of it, uh, not showing it, just to, just to demonstrate that it's there already, and the rezoning, just do it, because it's there already, correct?
Yes.
Alright. So, we had mentioned also that we were going to expand. Once we approved this, that you were gonna be looking into having another meeting, and probably approving to include more portion of the city, right?
Yes.
That's correct?
And, and ba- basically, in, in, in this case, the reason we're before the planning commission is because we have, uh, four applicants that have come forward and requested for a zone change, so they can build apartments. And usually, that's what the process is, uh, is that when interest is shown, and people come in, and, and they, and they show the interest that they want to improve their property by building more units, then we follow the process through it. Uh, there are fees that have to be paid, uh, in that, these individuals paid. Uh, but, uh, there is a process. Uh, we did have plans of bringing in the downtown, uh, on this one, but because i- it's, it's a little more time-consuming, then we figure we, we would go ahead and just bring this, uh, uh, area at this point, so that we can get the owners who have been waiting for a long period of time, uh, to be able to get, go down their, under, um, construction. Uh, but we, our plan is to work, uh, on the downtown. That is a priority, because, uh, like I said, I have, uh, spoken with some, some owners that are interested in utilizing the second story. So, um, that, that is not something that we're going to do, because we're being directed, but it's something that we're going to do, because there, there is an interest. And, and like the council member brought out is, uh, we wanna, we do wanna be proactive, so that when they do come back and they say, "Okay, we're ready," then the zoning is already in place. So, it is something that's in our, uh, blackboard to, to start as soon as, you know, this is, this is done.
Okay. And how much time are you allowing for your, your plans to expand this section of rezoning? Because I know you're over, understaffed, and too much work, but how much time are you dedicating for that? Is it something we're gonna see in the next two, three months, this year, or...
For, for what? No, I'm sorry.
For the, you know, for expanding the, the zone change that, for the sections that you have here. If it's approved tonight, this, the sections that you...
Oh, no, that, that, we're, we're gonna be going, our next step is to go before the, uh, city council.
Okay.
And then, once that goes, I think the process is 30 days, uh, uh, after it's been approved. So, after that period of time, then it goes into effect, and that's when we can, we can start, uh, moving forward. But at the point that, um, that it's approved by the city council, then, within the 30 days, then the, the property owners can start working on their plans, and, and, uh, submitting plans if they want to.
Okay. Alrighty, well, I'm in favor of it, and, and I, with the knowledge that I, I, you know, do consider other homeowners that do wanna be, you know, not, not, not missed, or, or, I guess, not having the opportunity to do the same thing that you have, what we're gonna approve, approve tonight. So, all I wanted to make sure that, uh, we're not doing this intentionally. We just, just haven't expanded, uh, as you say, as you stated. So, it's, it's coming soon. Okay, good. Alrighty, so, um, any, I guess we can, uh, make our decision?
I make the motion that we pass it?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Say.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Madam Chair, can I make a comment? Uh, congratulations to everybody here for, for the rezoning. But, um, again, let's not let this, if you let this linger, this, it'll take another five years before we're up here again. Um, um, city attorney, it, it, I don't know if this is how the, I know in the city council, at the meeting, you can actually put an agenda item for the next, uh, planning agenda. Is that something that they could do here today?
Well, I would suggest that they speak with staff about moving forward with that, putting something on.
Because if they don't, if, if it's not said, sometimes it, it'll, it'll fall through the, you know, fall through the gap, so...
I think that they're ready to discuss it for their staff.
We have the two, uh, commissioners wanting to put in the downtown.
Correct.
For our next, uh...
Well, it, it's not gonna, it takes a little longer than that.
Yes, Ralph, you're, you're right, but it could be put on the agenda for, uh, potent, uh, action, potential, potential, for discussion on that. Correct. Uh, well, you probably need to do, put on the agenda for discussion first, and then it could be brought in again for, for a discussion, possible action item. But I think it's something you guys need to discuss to, to conduct business as far as the mixed use downtown, and implementing, uh, a larger area, uh, as far as the, um, uh, the dense, uh, R, what is it, R1? The zoning, so, um, again, congratulations to everybody, and thanks to the board.
Thank you.
The piece of paper maybe has the roadmap for mixed use and everything. The city got a large grant for that.
Okay.
The city needs to follow up on that, and that's your roadmap for mixed use for downtown everything. It's all black and white on that.
We'll, we'll look into it. Bob, thank you so much for that information. Okay, so, so anything else, uh, that you wanna make any comments? Okay, Ulysses, any, any comments to this?
No.
Okay. Oh, item number three?
Yeah, tentative.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna move on to tentative parcel map waiver, item number three. UA 2017-18. The applicant is requesting approval by the city of a tentative parcel map waiver to create two parcels. Proposed parcel one is approximately .74 acres in size and contains an existing L-shaped building. The parcel two is approximately .96 acres in size and contains an existing building. The property is located at 101 Hacienda Drive. Presentation by Ralph.
Okay, chair, uh, person and commissioners. Yes, the owner of, of this property of 101 Hacienda Drive has submitted a tentative parcel map application in order to subdivide, uh, uh, their property. Uh, it is, will be divided in two parcels. One will be 1.0, oh, of 1.58 acres, I'm sorry. Uh, one of the parcel will be .74 acres, and the other one will be .96 acres. Uh, the zoning in that area is currently commercial, or zone, commercial highway. With that, uh, they, we are requesting for a parcel map waiver, which is being recommended for simple subdivision, having few or any development issues. Uh, a tentative map waiver would fall under the following conditions: that there are no requirements for approval of another major, uh, constructionary action; that there is no requirement for construction of major public facilities; and that all of the proposed parcels meet the current zoning and building, uh, regula, uh, regulations. It's a staff recommendation that the planning commission open the public hearing and allow input of the proposed tentative parcel map and waiver. It is then recommended that it be approved by taking the following action: to adopt the applicable findings and conditions under Planning Commission Resolution Number, uh, 2018, and approving tentative parcel map number, uh, 058120028 waiver.
Okay. Yes. Any comments? Okay, okay. So, closed for any comments from the public? And, uh, we're going to our commissioners? Any comments? Alex?
Yes. Ralph, why isn't the, uh, property owner or developer present?
He's, uh, from out of town, and he didn't form those, and he wasn't able to come.
Now, his waiver, what he wants to do, he probably, he's subdividing that property, because, uh, it's Hacienda 101. It's the one right next to Robinson Court. Am I correct?
It is right behind Robinson Court, yes. It's where that party store is at.
Exactly.
And then the old Bank of America.
Okay, so, uh, that property belongs to the guy that owns the property store, no?
Uh, it, it belonged to them. Now it belongs to someone else. That, that...
Was it sold, or was it a vague foreclosure?
Well, my... Well, my, I really don't know. The only thing I can tell you is that it has a different owner and that's the owner that wants to do the, the parcel map.
Okay. I, I have issue when it's like a waiver and, go ahead.
Yeah, the waiver is not waiving fees or anything like that.
No, 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 I know that.
It's just, it's just a process of, this, this was recommended by our engineer that this process could go through a waiver because of, because of what it falls under. There's no major changes.
Exactly, you're talking about the waiver, the SEQA and everything that goes on.
It would, it would be the, what would you call it?
It would, under SEQA, it would be categorically exempt under SEQA.
What's that?
It would be categorically exempt under SEQUAs, now which are.
I, I do have a little issue with that. And then the developers not here, I get a little more, hey, what are you going to do there? So, and I would like to hear what's the benefits that you see from this? Because I don't see much, that the big benefit is from the property owner. But what is our benefit, the city permitting this almost blanket waiver?
Well, it's not a blanket waiver. But the thing is, is that the, the benefit, I mean, we can't dictate as to what the owner can do. He might be thinking of maybe selling off the, the portion or leasing part of it and then to different owners. He, I, I'm not sure exactly what his, his plans are, but he does have a reason for doing the subdivision. Even if he was to sell it off, then I'm sure he would, he would sell it to someone that has a, a plan to develop that and, for it to be useful.
And when you say city engineer looked at it, what city engineer?
Our city engineer.
Who's that?
Mr. Dave.
Our city manager.
Well, he's our city engineer slash city manager.
Okay.
Yes.
Any more comments? Okay. Ulises?
No comments.
No comments? Okay. Well, I think Alex pretty much tapped into every question I could have had. So what we're going to decide here? Anyone's going to, in favor or not in favor?
I'm not against it, but I'm not ready to vote on it, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it. One quick question, Ralph. This is, you, on, on the options available for commission regarding motions to approve, based on your recommendations, it's a. Well, I don't see anything that would affect me from supporting it.
Any one second? No seconds? I guess it doesn't pass?
Yeah, board.
I mean, it's too late to make a comment.
Okay, so it doesn't pass? Right, so it does not pass? Okay, so what do we do now?
Do we have another motion or?
Motion to, to bring it back to the agenda so we maybe can discuss the, more on the approval?
Why exactly do you want to bring it back? It's a waiver of the city council review. So you can either make the decision now or you can have it go forward to city council. So.
They want to take it to city council.
They can take it to city council, so.
Because right now, I'm not ready to make a motion on this. I can't say I'm against it or for it. I'm not ready to vote on it. So if we could bring it another time, is that possible or?
That's possible.
See, that's what we're asking.
Yes, if you want to make a motion to.
Motion to bring it up to the next agenda, the next meeting? Okay.
Okay.
So make a motion to bring it to our next.
Would, excuse me, would this be a continuing of, of the item? And if so, do we have to go through the process of, of advertising? Because every time we advertise, it costs us five, $600.
Right, if we can.
That's a big expense that we do every time we do that.
If we know that we have a meeting coming up, we can continue it to that date certain. If, if it's, if we don't have one that we know that's coming up, yes. If it's to a date uncertain, then we would have to republish it.
Well, maybe, I don't think there's a rush for this, Ralph. Maybe for our next meeting, it could be on there, no? And.
It's, it's your.
Yeah, so I mean, that way we save those five, $600.
For the next meeting?
Do we have a meeting scheduled?
Yeah, we can have a meeting scheduled for that, for, for the 26th. Because I'm sure that you have an item that you want to put on, talking about the downtown. So we could put the downtown and then bring it in on the 26th to continue it.
Okay, so motion to continue for our next meeting? Discuss on the.
Yes, is that your motion and then do we have a second?
I've got a second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, so approved. Okay, so, so informational items from our planning commission? Ulises?
No.
No, no comments, I guess? Staff comments? Do you have any, any comments, staff?
None, none, none at this time. The only thing that, we'll be coming back for, for discussion on the, on the mixed use. And what we'll do is, we'll put it on the, on the agenda and then for the board to open it for comments and, and then discuss it and see what you want to see done and whatnot, and the areas that you would like to see. So we can, what we can do is, we can bring a map of the downtown and, and that goes, I think, all the way up to Third or Fourth Street. And then you can look at that area and, and make comments regards to that.
Okay, thank you, Ralph. Thank you so much. All righty, so. And I guess, meeting adjourned, no? Meeting adjourned.